Um, uh, let me see, we had a conversation before this, he told me to say, call it Reverend whatever. But Reverend Leroy Bradshaw is here to give our invocation for tonight.
Looking at all of you, I've watched all of you grow up and have played with you around all these eighty years that I've been around here. I cannot believe it, but I'm still seventeen. Let us pray. Now unto him who is able exceeding abundantly above all that we ask or think according to the power that worketh within us. Lord, so spoken and written, you are the one who provides all knowledge that we have. You are our wisdom. May we seek it in this moment, this place. And like man as Peter was concerned about his boat and the fishing he hadn't caught that night, when you got in his boat, he didn't listen to the message. You knew Peter. You're the same God as that day that is right here, right now. Help us to seek your opinion of what goes on here, not ours, as we debate whatever it is that you want to bring into our minds. We want to say thank you. As we approach the Thanksgiving season, we must be mindful of the fact that we are to give thanks every day. We are to seek your opinion about now. So help us, Lord, to turn our hearts to want to hear what you say and not what we want to say. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Bradshaw. Ladies and gentlemen, if y'all would join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. All right, board members, I need a motion to approve the agenda, but I believe there was some amendments. Is that right, Mr. Van Norbert?
I believe Greg Zody has placed at your desk two resolutions that are associated with the vacation of certain, let me turn the machine on here.
Yeah, turn it on.
Associated with the vacation of certain plaits here in the county, and these are associated with the Clessy and Sandra Morsett plat that we recorded in October of 2022, if I'm not mistaken. And the second resolution is a, is a resolution ratifying prior actions of the county's current and former planning and economic development directors. There are two additional resolutions, both primarily associated with the same matter. And in addition, the plaits that are being requested to be vacated are also included at your desk. And these are the two plaits. And Mr. Zody, is it correct, both of them are 2022 plaits?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Okay. And which part under new business that you want to put that under? The, is that the easements on?
No, I think it would be a separate item altogether.
Okay, well, new business, so.
Our new business would be number eleven.
Number eleven, so that'll be resolutions. I'll title that resolutions.
Yes, sir.
That'll address those items. Number twelve is the, let's see, Mr. Ingram and myself had met and want to inform the public and you guys about the radio tower. So we want to have some discussion on that under new business, number twelve. Mr. Ingram will take the lead on that. And then thirteen would be board salary. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with these amendments, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board members, we need a motion to approve and adopt the minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three and September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three.
They were received and adopted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are adopted. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're getting ready to move to the delegations from the public. And before we start, I know Mr. Ingram has something that he would like to address, so we're going to give Mr. Ingram the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm new to the board, but I think everybody needs to understand that the folks that are sitting up here are here to conduct the business for the county. If someone has an issue with a person, go talk to that person. We're here to conduct the business of the county. We'll discuss issues. We'll hear your opinions on those issues, but as far as personal attacks, we don't need that. If you, like I said, if you have an issue with a person, go talk to that person. You can work it out. May agree to disagree, as far as that goes. But please keep that in mind when we open up for the public discussion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. And ladies and gentlemen, also, when we come to the podium, anybody that speaks at the podium tonight, if you would please, we have a new microphone stand there, and you can adjust this. So take a second, adjust it to where the people at home can clearly hear you speaking, and we'll check that before you start, and it will not interrupt any of your time. We just want to make sure the people at home can clearly hear you speaking. All right. We're going to start with Mr. Alexander Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to thank the Notaway Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission for what y'all have been working with on solar and the features that I understand have been talked about in the zoning that you're working on. And it's going in the right direction, and I appreciate that. It's going to be preserving the character of Notaway County. It's got a lot of features in it. It will protect the viability of agriculture and forestry. It will protect private property rights of landowners. It will protect land for the best use. You allow enough solar to pay for the county's use of electricity, as I understand it, the megawatts. And I really appreciate where y'all are going and keep doing the job you're doing. I know you're doing, having a lot of pressure from different people that won't large industrial solar sites, particularly some of the lawyers that are representing the, those companies and the companies themselves. And I sort of find it real interesting where a whole lot of them are getting their funding to do this. It comes directly from the federal government, subsidized by the federal government. And it's a little alarming to me that we taxpayers have to pay it, or it goes in debt, more debt. That's where most of it's going. I understand now we're approaching about thirty-three trillion dollars in debt. Can anybody imagine what one trillion dollars is? One trillion dollars. I heard several years ago, and I wasn't able to go back and find it, that if you put a ten-dollar bills button on one all the way around the world, it would go all the way around the world one time and start going again. So to me, that sounds like a whole lot of money. And I just think it's sort of ridiculous if they're getting this money. The United States, over the last twenty years, have made great progress in the emissions that are going harmful to the environment. They've cut down more than any other country in the world, and not many countries have done anything to do anything. I'm just mentioning a few of them. Russia, China, India, the Middle East, Africa, and South America have done very little, if anything. So it doesn't make any difference. What we do is not going to stop global warming, I don't believe. And I'm not exactly sure what is causing global warming to start with, and I don't think a whole lot of other people do either. And I looked in the encyclopedia on climate, and you ought to get it and read it and tell you the different factors that can cause global warming. And one of them, you know, the Earth's axis doesn't have to move about a half a degree or three-quarter of a degree closer to the sun, and we're going to be burning up just about. So that is one of the features in there. So I'd like everybody to take a check at that. Again, I want to thank you all for the direction you're going in and just keep up the good work with the citizens of Notaway County.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Appreciate your comments, sir. Mr. Mike Mason.
Thank you, Chairman Rourke, and good evening to the members of the board.
Good evening.
If you recall, I almost run up, always run up against the clock when I'm standing here, so I wanted to get this out of the way first. In case I'm back at the, not back at this podium between now and January, I'd like to sincerely thank Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Sheckleton for their time, commitment, and invaluable service that they have given to Notaway. Mr. Vaughn, your institutional knowledge, when you walk out that door, is going to be hard to match for the next board.
Thank you. You're very kind.
And Ms. Sheckleton, your business and financial savvy and insight, as well as your calming demeanor, be greatly missed.
Thank you.
Wish you both the best, and thank you for everything that you've done for this county in an often thankless role. As you're aware, I'm opposed to just about any kind of solar project, particularly industrial solar, but I will make an exception for rooftop and parking lot projects. But this is just my opinion. And from what I can tell, it's the same sentiment that the majority of the citizens of Notaway County have. This doesn't mean that I can't respect the stance of those who might think otherwise. To that point, I'd like to thank the zoning commission in conjunction with Mr. Zody, Mr. Ingram, for working diligently to draft a solar ordinance that very well may satisfy both camps, provided that the proposed buffer setbacks are adhered to. Granted, they're stringent, but face it, nobody wants to look out their window to see solar panels versus forests or farmlands. So despite them being rigorous setbacks, I feel they're the crux of the compromise that this ordinance represents. If we back away from these setbacks, then I believe we need to then start considering compensation to adjacent landowners through either direct payments from the solar companies that are installing the projects or through property tax reductions, which I don't think we're in a position to do, or a combination of both. Before we got start, before we got into this very, very much, there were, there was no documentation regarding the reduction of land value associated with being near solar facilities. But that's not the case any longer. A couple of months back, I mentioned, mentioned this issue, this land value reduction. Here is the study, an international journal, peer reviewed studies called Energy Policy Study. And it shows that we in Notaway can likely expect to see an approximately 5.8% reduction in home values if you live within a mile of a large solar facility. Homes in rural areas are the most susceptible. However, with smaller scale projects and the proposed setbacks in this ordinance, I would think that we could expect those property value reductions to not be so drastic. Personally, I still wouldn't buy near a solar facility. Coming from a medical background, the unknown long-term health implications are concerning me greatly. Two things to briefly watch out for going forward. Mitigation. A disproportionate amount of time and efforts being spent at the regulatory advisory panel meetings at the DEQ office on mitigation practices. This is a group that's trying to put the finishing touches on House Bill 206. What's not being discussed is mitigation to the adjacent landowner, only the ecosystem itself as a whole. What amount of mitigation would ever compensate the likes of Mr. Hamilton had that Dickerson Creek project been allowed to go forth? Please think about the landowners whenever this appeasement phrase is used, as mitigation itself doesn't necessarily have to even occur within the county. It can be mitigated anywhere in the state. The second topic to briefly consider is blatant disregard. There are instances of solar companies completely disregarding county solar ordinances and then relying on strong-arm litigation to wear the county down to get its way. Watch for it. Lastly, in response to comments made in last month's public hearing, I'd like to offer myself and the time that I have remaining to the board for questions you might have regarding the validity of anything that I've presented over the last year and a half.
Anything you have presented to me, sir, has been backed up by documentation.
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate your time. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Rose Wooten. If you need to pull that down a little bit, go ahead and pull it down. We just want to make sure everybody at home can hear you.
Still have a Jim voice. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. I've been attending the Planning Commission meetings and the board meetings since December 2021, just a couple, but not very many of them. And lately, I've been attending the zoning committee meetings also, as they begin to develop a solar ordinance for the county. I would like to commend the committee for their continued hard work on developing a solar ordinance, I can't see, that preserves the rural character of our county. Among the many things that I've learned from listening to the zoning committee is that the committee members are dedicated to design a solar ordinance that speaks to all citizens of Notaway County, those who wish to embrace solar and those who are opposed to industrial solar. I am a mixture of both those groups. I support solar on the rooftops of homes in the county, on chicken houses, on the barns, even on warehouses. I still have some qualms maybe about recycling, whatever, but if they're going to use those and they're going to benefit from the energy produced, then yes, I support that. I am opposed to industrial solar on agricultural, conservation, and forested land. Industrial solar battery storage units and thousands of panels belong in industrial zone areas and not on rural areas of the community. I don't think Notaway County and other rural areas for that fact of the state should have to shoulder the supply of energy to big businesses' data centers. Many counties in the state have begun to push back on the amount of solar development in their counties. I don't know the reasoning for this, but they have. Some have chosen to update their ordinances, and others have chosen to look into putting caps on the amount of solar in their counties. I do think that Notaway can benefit from the lessons learned in other counties and develop a solar ordinance that brings its citizens together and speaks to the rural character of the county as a comprehensive plan so often references. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wooten. Ms. Tyler Scott.
Hope this works. Anyway.
Anyway, thank you, Chairman Rourke, and fellow supervisors. I may not be as eloquent as my colleagues, but I'm speaking from the heart. I have spoken to you before. I am against anti-industrial solar. As many of you know, I retired here with my husband five and a half years ago. We're from Richmond, and we moved here for the culture of small-town life, the beautiful land, the people. Our value is in our land and our way of life. And if we're going to have development, we have to have smart growth and planned development and retain our rural character, because if we don't, and we become a hub for subdivisions and large, large industrial sites, in a short amount of time, we'll be Hull Street, and that is rapidly approaching, as you've seen what's coming down 460. Another point I'd like to make is it's my opinion that our country's in trouble, and things may be getting worse. So I would hope that Notaway would protect its agricultural land for food production, because we may need it. The final point I'd like to make, and I too have been going to a lot of meetings and talked to a lot of people over the past couple of years, one thing that has bothered me is that the solar representatives all come here and they tell us how great solar's going to be, and how rich the county's going to get, and how there won't be any repercussions, and how our power bills are going to go down. And in my opinion, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably isn't true. But have you noticed one thing? None of them live here, which means if there are repercussions in two years, or five years, or 20 years, they won't have to deal with the problems, we will, and so will our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Sonny Abbott.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Van Orbeck.
Good evening, sir.
I hope you won't be disappointed tonight that I don't speak about solar. Just because my name starts sunny doesn't mean that...
Yeah, chipper wouldn't have fit you either.
Let it go with that. I recently had the opportunity to meet with our acting county administrator to discuss the general topic of funding and the budget shortfall. Each of you should recall my asking about the budget deficit for legal expenses in that line item. The appropriated amount of $50,000 is thousands of dollars deficient in the first two months of the fiscal year. And with 10 months remaining, where were the funds being moved to cover legal costs that were sure to be incurred? On appropriations date, the budget balanced. Yes, expenses and revenue were equal. I asked from which line items where money's going to be moved to cover any legal expenses experienced from September through next June. Granted, our administrator did not suggest any money movement between line items during our meeting. He did, however, share with me the 2022 audit from Robinson Farmer Cox, and after having reviewed that document, I have a better understanding of the total financial condition of the county. I still, I still feel that there needs an understanding of from what line items money will be moved to keep the budget balanced. Otherwise, there should be an appropriation of a specific amount made from those funds we call the reserve. Again, thank you, Mr. Van Orbeck. Mr. Chairman, I look forward to reviewing the data next month, hopefully, when the '23 audit will be available. My hope is that the numbers haven't deteriorated greater than the losses experienced from June of '21 through June of '22. Now, there are only a few months before the '24, '25 budget process will start again. That process cannot take place like last year. The experiences surrounding the development of our current budget last year are still being felt today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Ms. Elze. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm representing Notaway Cares, and I wanted to address the item on the agenda tonight concerning the animal shelter, specifically the cost of the new shelter. As you all know, we feel that the current plan for the shelter is functional, no frills, appropriately sized, and would serve the county for the next 25 years very well. However, we are also acutely aware that the cost of the shelter has accelerated to the point that the original design may need to be, may not be achievable, and that costs need to be reduced, which will require changes to the plan. We do not oppose the need to do this, but we urge that a serious effort be made to identify and evaluate all possible cost reductions and funding options before a final decision is made on either the budget or the plan. Bring together the resources of the architect, RRMM, Notaway Cares, the town of Burkhville, with you all to do this, to really understand the options for cost-cutting and funding. Certainly, a work session would do this. Quite frankly, this was our understanding from the beginning in terms of what the process would be as the bid was, the bids were being considered. You know, our goal has always been to preserve the size of the animal shelter, the shelter plan. And for this reason, we've just announced that the Notaway Cares Build a Better Shelter fundraising campaign will continue, after our $500,000 goal was met, and we're only $16,000 short of that goal. And the reason we're doing this is, I hope obvious, that we want to increase our contribution, maximize the contribution that we can make to the county for this. But you know, we are committed to building a shelter. A shelter, even with changes, as long as it remains, maintains the original goals. Those goals of meeting current and future needs, being modern, being state-compliant, allowing for more humane care, promoting adoptions. But informed choices really need to be made, decisions need to be made, and to do that, the details need to be known. There are a lot of details in the shelter. We have been overwhelmed the last five years, how hard this is, and we need to share all of this. The other request is that we're urging you to take no final decision on those value engineering suggestions that you've received from the contractor, the Norman Company, until the analysis from the architect is received and you can really understand the implications. I feel like this is a simplistic statement to make to you, but the fact that they were in your packet motivates us to share that. Certainly, there's a lot in those suggestions, I have to tell you. There's some of them for which we either are quite sure we can find donors or already have a donor. So it's important we talk about this, because every, every donation, every funding source reduces or eliminates the cost reduction. And the DEQ permits have been received, which means we could break ground tomorrow. This should incentivize us, it should excite us actually, but it certainly should incentivize us, incentivize us. And you know, lastly, I have to say that the Notaway County Animal Shelter for dogs and cats is not a dog pound. It's not a corral where livestock is impounded until received, retrieved, maybe received or... It's a facility where lost, stray, abandoned, surrendered cats and dogs are humanely treated and cared for until they're returned to their owners, until they're adopted, until they're transferred, until the issues with them are dealt with. And the new Notaway County Animal Shelter and Adoption Center will be that and more. This issue for the county is not animals versus people. A shelter serves people too, in many ways. Residents depend on the shelter in many ways. When there's trouble, when there's need, when they want to volunteer, it's not a us or them. And it's a vision. It's been a vision, and it really should be a plus, not a problem for the county. So, thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your impending action. And let's build a better shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jack Boswell.
I think Ms. Elze has covered it very well in Notaway.
All right, sir.
I remind you all of the board appointed this committee to advise you, and we would like to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Mr. Warren Wade.
Good evening to the board and Ms. Ward. You know, I was here about two and a half months ago and spoke to you asking about a grocery store, and I didn't get the answer I wanted. You give me an answer, but it was sort of a, they come to us, we don't go to them. So anyhow, I took that as, you know, maybe I need to, to look into this a little bit more, which I've done. And I can report to you tonight and make you happy that I have two grocery concerns that are coming here, one next Thursday, one next Friday. I will not name them due to contractual obligations that they may have with the landowners. But they asked me to come to you and to see what you can do to provide them with an incentive to come and build and stay in this area. I have six pieces of property now that we're looking at. Maybe you know of more, maybe you have some property that you'd like to sell them to build on. But they are going to bring jobs to the town and the county, they're going to bring taxes that you need, they bring the food that the people here need. As you know, AJ's closed down. Basically, what we have now, I think Mr. Van Beek knows this one, is what's called a desert. We only have two stores you can get food, Family Dollar and Dollar General. That's the only grocery store, excuse me, the street, the Latino market. But not anybody wants to go there. So I've done that, and next Thursday and Friday, I will have these people in town. We're going to look at the properties, and hopefully, they can come to an agreement with the landowner, work with the town or the county, whichever is going to be built in, and get things moving. And I like to have a meeting with you, Mr. Ward, where we can sit down and talk this. Maybe you can give me some ideas of what you can or cannot do. And then I guess the process, it goes on from there to the planning commission and whatever else. But I think we can have a grocery store here in this area by probably January 1, if everything works out right. But that was one of the things I worked on. The second, I see that you have a lot of issues where you need money. To get this grocery store, I had to work with some people down in Richmond called Economic Development. They have a lot of funds, Mr. Zodi and I talked about this, and they have some new ones coming up. And you can check into ones called Launch 2024. There's money in there for a lot of things. The Industrial Volatilization Fund, that has a lot of money in it. In fact, I think it's $14 million that you can draw from now. You just have to file a grant. There's urban, housing and urban development have a lot of funds. Now, the town needs to fix their water and sewer lines. If they were to go and apply for these funds, they could probably get it and fix these water and sewer, and they've got millions of dollars in there. The government just gave up a whole bunch of money for that. There's also a group out of Petersburg, and let me pull that out here, because I want you to check into it, and it's called GoodR.com. It's a group that comes in, they have a 28-foot truck full of groceries. For the people that don't drive or can't get out to go to the food stores or to the pantries, they came, come in, and they give the food away. All they have to do is get somebody to bring them there to this truck, go through and get what they want, and go. And that's www dot good, G-O-O-D-R, dot com. I think if we could hook up to them, if they can go to Petersburg and Hopewell, we're not that far out, and they can come here, and it would be a benefit to our community. Now, I want to talk about this solar panel deal. I would like to see that there be a maximum of six sites, no more than 40 acres. They go with what you folks have been talking about for the borders and everything. And please do not put one over that pipeline that runs through the county. That would be a fire that you could never put out once it gets going. And Lord help us, the explosion that would come from it, because of the chemicals in those panels. If you don't know what's in them, you need to investigate it, because they leak, it goes into the soil, it goes into the water. It's a problem child. We don't want to deal with that. Then on top of that, I've been working to get some more doctors in the county. That was a goal of mine since the day I got here and needed medical attention and couldn't get it. I've worked with the people over at Southside Hospital and Centura, and they are working on getting two new doctors to come into Burkhville. I've also talked to Ms. Morton down at Economic Development. They have funds available, and this county has, how many schoolchildren? 1,750 or so? But we have no pediatrician. You ladies in here, there's no ladies health specialist or doctor or gynecologist here. And that was what I brought up, and again, talking about a desert, that's where we're at. You know, it's a shame that the little town of Dillon has eight doctors, and this whole county has four. So we need to do something, and I'm willing to work with you if you'll work with me. I know you, all of you work, you have jobs, and you don't have the time to do these things. By golly, I'm one of the guys that is, well, we'll say, I'm not working anymore, I'm retired.
All right.
I have plenty of time to look on the computer, to do these things, to help you. And that's why I'm trying to get on this board to help do these things. We got to get them done. If you don't, the town or crew will die, this county will be responsible for a whole lot more than you want.
And Mr. Wade, we're, we're at time here, but
Okay.
I would like to take a second and address a couple of the items that you said there. First of all, you said you could not get medical attention, and I want to clarify that.
Okay. You want me to tell you what about it?
Well, it's simple yes or no. That had nothing to do with Notaway County or Burkhville EMS fire rescue. Is that correct?
No, it's not them. It was the doctors here in town. They said they didn't have anybody who could see me, come back a week, which I did. They said they didn't have anybody who could see me, come back a week, which I did. Went back, they were busy, but there's nobody in the lobby, there's three cars in the parking lot. I don't know what their business is, and I'm not going to ask.
But if we, if we could, if we could move on, I just want to address the county's part here. You're talking about incentives, the last time you were here, we clearly stated to you that we would offer tax abasements and possibly even give the land away.
Right.
So I'm not sure where your inaccuracy is coming from. We have always been at the spirit's tip when it comes to that for any economic development since I've been here.
Right.
And that is not just me, that is this entire board.
Right.
And at the end of the day, when you said that it comes to us and we don't go to them, that's not accurate either. One of the first things we've done, when 2020 rolled around and this new board took its seat, was we went to the Economic Development Playbook, and what we took out is that we, the statement in there is that would not seek, we removed that. We are now proactive in that, to the extent where we have a new Economic Development Committee.
Right.
So we are doing what we can do. I think, I think what's, what also concerns me is that, I understand you're running for a seat, and God bless anybody, I think every seat, including mine, should be challenged every year. I think that's just good government. But what I don't like to see is in the accuracies being used and fingers being pointed at this board, it puts this board in a situation where it feels like it has to defend itself against one of its citizens.
Well, I didn't come here to make accusations, I came here with what I perceive to be the Might be a little bit wrong my way, might be a little bit wrong your way, but we've got to work together to get these things done.
All right, we, we'll meet, and I'll reach out to you, and we'll, we'll, we'll meet. But, but right now, we need to
Hey, I know we can't do it tonight, you going to call me to
Yes, sir.
Call me?
I have your information right there, I'll call you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Joanne Webb.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening.
I'm not going to be the popular one here tonight, I'm afraid.
Can I interrupt you just one second? If you don't mind, just moving that microphone, or just a little bit closer to you. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, they beat us up when they can't hear you at home.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
My family and I, we own and manage timber in six counties in Virginia, including Notaway County. We're thankful for a very good contracted logger, licensed forester, to harvest and manage our timber on a year-round basis. We're also thankful for our hunt clubs, help us pay our taxes. Timber covers 62% of Virginia. That's almost three, almost two-thirds of our land base in Virginia, and that's good for many reasons. However, there are tougher times now for timber, and tougher times moving forward. There's a huge oversupply of timber in Virginia, the South as a whole. Markets have consolidated, the ACC allowed to consolidate all of the paper mills in Virginia, Covington, Hopewell, Onoc Rapids, West Point. There's no negotiating for products anymore, that's a long-gone story. And wood products are being replaced by other products, tracks, laminated floors, composites, many other non-wood construction products. In 2015, we were approached by Virginia Solar LLC. Daddy and William really didn't want to talk to him, but I was intrigued by him. I learned much from him. We moved forward, and we have two of the first utility solar projects in Virginia in production since 2016 and 2017. We have the first in the state to have battery storage on them. They're off of Route 13 and Power Tan, they're very well-done. We own the land, we lease it, it's owned by, it's owned by Vepco and Dominion Power. If anyone wants to see a good project, you can try it, you can barely see it, but it's an excellent project. At the time, it seemed to take forever, but looking back, it was very fast. We made power in 16 and 17. I know there's a lot of opposition to solar, but private property rights also still exist in America. I'm passionate about keeping our land together for the next generation. Next generation has seven young adults, none work in our business. I attended a 2023 Generation Next workshop in Charlottesville recently, sponsored by Virginia Forest Department, Virginia Tech, Virginia Tech EDU. It was a good meeting, the main topic to help you keep your land together was conservation easements. That was the only topic really covered. That was the way to preserve your land going forward. We've done some of these in more than one county, we regret this very much. My father grew to be very sorry he did this. There are better ways to keep your own, to own your land, keep it together, receive benefits for you and your children, your grandchildren, your heirs, and your community. Did you want to ask something?
No, no.
Okay, no worries. I appreciate the opportunity, I know it's not popular here. I also work on the state Virginia Solar Development and Energy Battery Storage Authority. I can tell you, the counties are fighting this, and I'm sorry to see it. I have four projects and options, I think they will all go to production. I work on solar at some point most days, I get, I don't mean all day, but I may get a call or someone calls me, but it almost becomes part of my everyday, every day, speaking here tonight, or speaking other places. Solar's not a bad thing. If you don't embrace it, that, that's going to be your choice. I suspect that at some point, there will be some interference that will come from above. There's a way to manage it properly, there are ways that are not good. A lot of people who will, who will, who will call you to type your land, I've had many of those calls, you have to do your own research, it's a long process now. Most of those options are five to seven, 10 years. It's a long process. It is not a bad thing, though. There are good places to have it, and there are bad places to have it. I thank you for your time, thank you.
Ms. Webb, could I ask you to clarify one thing, if you don't mind, please?
Yes.
When you say come from above, you speak in golly or the state?
I'm sorry.
When you say it comes from above, were you talking about, you speak in golly or do you mean from the state, like eminent domain?
I don't think it would be eminent domain, I just think there's, I think there will be pressure coming down for counties to consider it. I think there is, and our governor, to be honest, who I'm very proud of, his push is really for, is really for nuclear power, which I think is, you know, these small nuclear plants, I think that is a great way to go, great way.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm all for that. I, I just sense that there will be, at some point, some potential pressure. I'm just going to be honest with you.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't go everywhere, I get that.
All right.
But anyway, I thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Ricky Rash. Good evening.
Members of the board, I'm not actually here to talk about solar unless y'all want me to. But anyway, I am here tonight to talk about Piedmont Solar Water Conservation District and our history over the last 25 years. The last 25 years, Piedmont, and I'm pulling up a graphic to make sure I get you all the correct numbers. Piedmont Solar Water Conservation District has meant $100,000 a year to Notaway County in economic development. By doing that, we have preserved, in the tri-county area of Notaway, Prince Edward, and Amelia, almost 1,900 acres, put it in some type of buffer. That equates to 1.4 million feet of livestock fencing to fence out the streams, that's 257 miles. The total investment for all of these BMP practices, and there's 548, that is over $11 million with Piedmont, the landowners, and other federal and state agencies contributing money. So when I get asked questions about what does Piedmont Solar Water Conservation do, this is what we do. We put money back into the counties, we help landowners fence out the streams, be responsible environmental stewards. So with that, out of that nine million, 3.1 million has come into Notaway County. It's over a million dollars of landowners, taxpayers in Notaway County that have invested their money through the cost-share program. 457 practices, 134 of those are in Notaway County. In Notaway County alone, we have fenced out over 300,000 feet of stream, that's just south of 60 miles. So agriculture is doing its job. We're fencing out the streams, we're trying to comply with all the environmental regulations that are there. It is a cost-share program of 75, 25, 25 coming from the landowner. The landowner does have some skin in the game, but they have the investment and the pride of knowing that they invested. We all utilize clean water, all of us. It all runs downhill. We have to take care of it when the stream goes by my farm, Mr. Ingram's farm, anybody else's farm in here, so when it gets to the James River, the Apomatics, Chesapeake Bay, or even Alvermaw Sound where we're standing here, we have to do our part. And Piedmont, through its grants and programs and education, has done that quite well. I would think that when you look at our budget numbers, when we come back to you in a couple of months and ask for money, I, I want you to remember the $100,000 a year economic generator. You're getting about a 10 to 1 ratio on your dollar, so maybe you can step that up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions? Mr. Rash, I do want to personally thank you, and, and I, I, sure, I can speak for the board, just to thank you for serving, and your fellow partner with that as well on this, and being willing to continue to run and serve again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Hawthorne.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good.
Thank you for entertaining. Again, I am, still, Robert Hawthorne. And if you listen to our first group of speakers that talked against solar development in Notaway County, then somebody like me just doesn't exist. I'm kind of the, the exception to all the rules that they are trying to convince this board are in play or exist. I am a lawyer, but I'm not here as a lawyer. I'm a landowner in this county, a taxpayer in this county, I grew up in this county, along with Lunenburg and Brunswick Counties. I'm not here because I am getting paid to be here. I'm, I'm here because I'm concerned about Notaway County, and I've looked into this. I, I welcome this debate. In fact, I think one of the speakers mentioned a study, I didn't really get the name, it was International something. That's great, I'd love to see that study, I'd love to look at that. My data, my research says something a little different, but that, that's what, I'm here to talk about the facts when it comes to solar. I guess, unlike the first group of speakers, in fact, I think, if not all of them, I'm the only one that doesn't own land around this Dickerson Creek project that was previously discussed but never applied for. And I guess unlike that group, I've lived here all my life, I've made my living here, I raise my children here, I hope to be here when we decommission some of these projects, I certainly think my children will be here, at least some of my five kids will be here, grandkids, when that time comes. But I, I'm here to talk about what solar can do for the county, but also what solar does not do. You've heard a whole lot of negative talk about solar, and I just want the facts to be before this board, this county, this populace, when we make these decisions, yea or nay. Under the current ordinance that y'all are now considering, you might as well just say, we don't want solar, period. There, there will be no projects. That's not, it's not a fair balance, it's not a, a meeting in the middle, it's a, it's the ruination of any commercial solar project whatsoever. That's just the math with the setbacks, and you heard the speaker at the last meeting, she gave you the statistics. No projects will work under that scenario. So if you don't want to do solar, after you've heard the facts, after you've explained to the county the revenue that you'd be giving up, when you are announcing the tax increases, just own up to it and say, we weren't for solar. But here's what solar does not do. It does not create a noise nuisance, it does not damage our water courses and our water supplies. So, commercial solar projects do not produce harmful radiation or cause any cancer, they don't clutter our landfills. In fact, the decommissioning of solar panels is decades away. More clutter goes into our landfill every day because of these little gadgets that we all want up against our ear, that we can't have without the data centers, the computers in our cars, our Facebook, anything digital, iPads, iPods, whatever, it all goes into the landfill every day on a massive scale, way more than solar would ever create. Solar does not create an environmental cleanup site. It does not seek to displace or reduce other forms of energy production. I do represent solar developers, I represent landowners in favor of solar projects, I've represented landowners not in favor of solar projects. No one that I have been involved with in solar has advocated going to just solar or just wind. You heard this young lady that just spoke about nuclear, I think it's great, I'm all of the above, coal, nuclear, natural gas, solar, maybe wind, but solar has the least impact on the environment of all those alternatives. And it could just be one more piece to the puzzle, one more component towards energy independence and financial security for this county. Solar does not increase the temperature of the Earth's atmosphere or contribute to climate change. It does not negatively impact farming interests. Between 2012 and 2017, according to the USDA, this county, before solar was even on our radar, this county lost over 11,000 acres in farmland, because people voluntarily walked away from the farmland. You can't make very much money farming unless you're one of the big boys. I'm a farmer, I'm a, I own land, I own timber, I have a fairly sizable tobacco farm, you know, I, I know all these businesses, I know all these industries. Farming is not going to be impacted by solar. If we're concerned about farming, we need to be concerned about farming for whole different reasons than, than, than the advent of solar on our horizon. Solar does not negatively impact timber interests, you've already heard some of the statistics. According to the US Forest Service in 1945, the southeast, no, the country, had 1,600 billion board feet of timber. You know how many board feet of timber we have today? Two generations later, 1,600 billion board feet. Solar's been around for all of that time, we don't have any less trees. And your timber industry, like your farming, is going to the industrial end of the spectrum. If you're here to protect farming, you're protecting the five, six, seven big farmers around here. If you're protecting timber, you're protecting the five, six, seven big timber owners around here. So I just, solar does not have a negative impact on those industries. It does not create pressure on services, you don't have to answer emergency calls, there's no domestic disputes, there's no police pressure with a solar project, it doesn't harm the environment with toxic chemicals, under normal operating circumstances, there is no chemical hazard to solar whatsoever. It does not benefit China or other foreign countries disproportionately, certainly not like other electronic devices, or the clothes that we're wearing, or the cars that we drove here, or the toys that we buy for our kids. Solar panels certainly don't favor foreign countries the way those items do. It does not build on top of pipelines or any other infrastructure. Solar projects just, just don't do that, that would be, that would be absurd.
Mr. Hawthorne, could we, could we get to a closing here with time?
We, we could, if, I would hope that we're allotted the same amount of time that the previous speakers had, which I don't think I have enjoyed yet. If you give me one more minute, I'll tick down the list.
I'll, I'll give you the minute, we started at 53, you've had seven minutes now, instead of the five.
All right. Well, then I'll, I'll wrap it up really quickly. It does not disturb soil more than farming or logging operations annually do, and certainly not like on a per-acre basis building a lake wood. It doesn't harm or depreciate viability or quality of our wildlife, I've seen no study verifying that. It doesn't discriminate by arbitrary county boundary lines, in other words, solar generates electricity that's for all uses. It's not for a data center, it's not for any particular use, it's for all electrical use. It doesn't force any landowner or any developer to do anything that they don't want to do. It's a voluntary transaction between the landowner, the landowner's rights, and the developer. If there's negative externalities to neighbors, fine, let's talk about it, let's do something about it. But until I see that, until I see studies that show that, it should not be a significant consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sue Yates. All right. Thank you. Ms. Sue Yates.
I have something to give you guys first.
Can we hit him?
Mr. Ingram, there's a note of it to you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Here I am again. And Mr. Ingram, my apologies beforehand to you.
Thank you.
I anxiously await the day that I can come forward and commend the work that all of you are doing. Unfortunately, it only takes one bad apple to ruin the rest. Ms. Simmons, you have recently spewed racism and deceit in an effort to get yourself reelected. Can't you just do your job, take time to understand the issues, ask questions, do some research, or perhaps it's just about power? I really don't know. What I do know is that you have said some terrible things in your tenure. You should have been censured long ago. Recently, you contacted the Crewe Burkeville Journal, who notoriously runs stories without any verification of the facts, with a blatant disregard for the truth. The truth matters. Last week, the Journal wrote, "Notaway County Supervisor Helen M. Simmons Urges All Crewe Residents to Have Their Water Tested." Did you follow your own advice on behalf of the citizens? I'm guessing not, but I did. And those are the copies of the water testing report that I paid for. The report analysis shows that Crewe's water is drinkable and safe. I believe that you were fear mongering our Crewe citizens in an effort to make it look like you were the only one looking out for their well-being, but what you really did was hurt Crewe. Why now, Helen? If you want to win the election, why don't you put up signs, banners, and even a tent at an event? Why didn't you attend the candidates' forum? It is common knowledge that Crewe has had water issues for years. Where was your voice five, 10, and 15 years ago? It is no secret that those in leadership have in the past refused to run our little town proactively instead of reactively, and now it has all caught up with them. Personally, I think that we should get serious about working with Blackstone. We should be building Notaway, not Prince Edward County. Remember, united we stand, divided we fall. It is difficult to decide if your worst moment was the time you berated the handicapped wheelchair-bound citizen about PSR, or this time by fear mongering the citizens in Crewe and trying to make them believe that their water is not safe. Representing our minorities is a huge responsibility, and you are failing them along with everyone else. Board members, do your job. I call to censure, I call you to censure, Helen Simmons. On another note, Sheriff Jones, I voted for you at the last election, but I can't vote for you this time. You're failing us. Drugs and crime are on the rise under your tutelage. Last month, Mr. and Mrs. Banton addressed the issues surrounding the armed robbery that Mrs. Banton was a victim of. While Mr. Banton was speaking, he asked you why you did not use Code Red for this dangerous incident. You responded by saying, with a smile on your face, that you made that choice because the residents on Bible Road had a private Facebook page set up so that they can alert one another and talk about crime on their road. Fact, Mr. and Mrs. Banton do not live on Bible Road, and they are not a part of this private Facebook page. Why is our chief law enforcement officer relying on citizens' Facebook pages to make law enforcement decisions? John Work then asked if you would be willing to have a meeting with Mr. and Mrs. Banton, Buddy Hines and himself. You said yes. What did you do to facilitate the meeting? Fact, you led John to believe that the Bantons no longer wanted a meeting. They never said that. I found out yesterday that it was John that put the meeting together after all, and the meeting will be tomorrow. To date, this case has not been solved, and there's still an armed robber most likely running around Notaway County. This is shameful. I made a FOIA request of you and the Blackstone PD, asking you which of your deputies were trained in active shooter training. I received Blackstone's information last week. I still don't have yours. What have you personally done to offer active shooter training in our county? The children in this county are our national treasure, and it is your duty to keep them safe. In response to a letter I sent, you state that your office has had to navigate the protest and civil unrest. Please tell me what the protest was or civil unrest is that we have in Notaway County, because I haven't seen it. Lastly, I referenced our U.S. Constitution, and you're not standing up for it. You replied, "I believe our Constitution was founded on a lot of common sense principles, and I will continue to use common sense as I navigate my way through the issues that arise." Wow. Is that all you think of our Constitution? Our Constitution is more than just common sense principles. I am appalled that this is what you have reduced our Constitution to. It is, Sheriff Jones, the fundamental law, the fundamental law of the U.S. federal system of government and the most important written document in the United States today. It is the oldest written document that defines the principles of government and the basic rights of our citizens in America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyson, is that Utte or Ott?
It's Utte.
Utte, Tyson Utte.
Yeah, you got it. That's right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board, appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tyson Utte. I'm with Commonwealth Energy Partners, CEP Solar. I am one of the solar developers, actually co-founded and manage a company that's developing projects across Virginia, working over 20 counties. I'd just love to share some of my experience and background with you all, really in an effort to try and be a good partner to Notaway County as you're navigating your solar ordinance process. For us, I want to just really highlight how with the 20-plus counties we work in, we haven't come across ordinance that has setbacks quite to this degree. I just wanted to emphasize how I believe there could be some unintended consequences given the scale of the setbacks. I can understand, while I may not disagree, some people don't want to necessarily look at solar panels, and I get that, and that's okay. There's a lot that can be accomplished with vegetative screening on projects that don't require 800-foot setbacks. So I really would like to offer myself, or anyone on our team, our company, to be a resource to you all as you're considering the ordinance. I came tonight because I understand that there isn't an opportunity to weigh in during the planning commission meeting, so I just wanted to be sure to be here present and offer my perspective. I can relate to the fact, again, that I'm not from Notaway County. I understand that. My family, most of them from Hillsville, Virginia. I was born down in Danville, Virginia. We formed Commonwealth Energy Partners because we want to see this be done right in Virginia. We want to see this yield good results for our landowner partners, for their communities, for counties. And we think that when the right standards are in place and we do these projects with quality, it really can be a win for everybody. So I just wanted to offer that perspective, again, because of some of the fact that these smaller projects that could get caught up in some of the larger-scale setbacks being considered. When you have a small project on what is defined as medium in the draft that I've seen, those projects can get wiped out for the smaller landowners because of the setbacks. And so I just really want to urge some caution when weighing that, when if the real objective can be to protect those adjacent property rights, or absolutely our standards that can work to do that and achieve that. I understand there are studies, some that point to one outcome, others that point to another. But we've got over 3,000 megawatts operating in Virginia in all sorts of different counties. And so it's being able to be done, being able to be done responsibly, you know, when the right attention to detail is being paid. And we just want to make sure that you all know that there are companies that are trying to be good partners to communities with our landowners and hopefully have good outcomes for everybody. So appreciate your time, and please don't hesitate to reach out to us if we can be of any help.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Dennis Tatum.
Trying to work on a solar project in Crewe, Northern and Southern Railroad. Nobody can, that lives around me can see it. And I'd like for the county to take advantage and let's do this, give a tax money to the county, emergency vehicles, schools, whatever you may need it for. I'd like for y'all to work with me on it, see where we can get. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that'll conclude the public, delegations from the public. We have no public hearings, correct?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Ricky Rasch, if you would, sir, would you?
I already did it.
You're done. Okay. All right. All right. We're going to departmental reports, VDOT. How you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm doing well. I think I'm going to keep coming. Ms. Bryant owes me lunch for this one.
All right.
Our wonderful crew at Notaway Area Headquarters will begin a rural rustic project on 647 Jennings Ordinary Road on Monday. A short rural rustic project. They'll start dropping rock. Hopefully we can get it surface treated by the time it gets too cold. Run the risk of that this time of the year. Notice to proceed has been issued to our mowing contractors for both primary and secondary routes within the county. This will be a full width right-of-way mow, so they'll go all the way to the extent of the right-of-way on our primary route, which they already have started, some on 460. I did look into the speed study on 723. It has been initiated but not finalized yet. I will spread the word once I get the results from that study.
Thanks for the warning.
On my end, we are in full swing, getting ready for the winter time, prepping all of our equipment, our hired equipment, and state equipment dry runs of this coming week. So looking forward to being prepared for whatever Mother Nature might throw at us in the coming season. May I switch gears to Blackstone for, as I finish up? I believe Ms. Bryant touched base on the speed study going into 40, and I looked into the asphalt contract as well. We can do an addendum to the contract to add locality as a beneficial user. Just got to get concurrence from the contractor and the locality, and we should be able to do that. So I'll be, begin working on that with my contract manager shortly. What can I do for the board this evening?
Anybody got anything?
Check on 49 South, please. I'm having a hard time seeing when I come off of West Courthouse to cross 49 to come this way. Lady almost hit me this afternoon. I don't know what she was looking at. It wasn't me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is it foliage, grass, or trees?
Yeah, it needs to be, it needs to be cut.
Yes, sir. I will have that looked at and addressed tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, board members, as you know, your solid waste is in your package along with your building inspection and erosion control, animal control report, Piedmont Health District report, as well as your laboratory report. Ms. Martin, did you have anything from the school?
We got this evening for Solare.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
And Mr. Rowe, thank you. Did you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Social Services report. All right. Mr. Buddy Hyde. And Buddy, as you were, as Buddy approaches, can we do something as far as whoever we need to contact? Like, we had an issue with a, with a water issue, and Buddy was not given notice of that. And if there's going to be water shutdown, his Bible that all emergency services aware of where any shutdown might possibly be simply because there's a fire. You know, he found out second or third hand, I believe it was. So we want to make sure that we're, anything we need to do to make sure that doesn't happen again, I guess, address.
Right. Yeah. I think, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Van Orbach, citizen staff, good evening. I think we have that worked out. It worked pretty well on the repair, I think, Monday. I'm in pretty good contact with, with regular contact with both TJ Shelton and Dan Mard, which are two public works. Ever since I've started working here, we've, we've had a rapport with cell phones on both of our cell phones. So, but I think on this one, you know, we just mainly wanted to know if it was impacting the complex, and it wasn't. So everything worked out well. We had plenty of pressure here for a couple of days. I was in touch with the staff and so forth, so I think we were fine. But yeah, it would be nice, just like anything else. You know, anything that needs to go out on Code Red or whatever, I just need to know about it, because obviously I can't push the button if I don't know. So those things are, and just so everybody knows in the public, when a water line does have an issue, we do have town clerks in each town that has Code Red capability. So we have a whole team of Code Red people. We have Tiffany Sisk in Crewe. We have Jennifer Daniel in Blackstone. And we have Brian Welch in Burkeville. And then, of course, myself, the sheriff, and the director of 911. And we just trained our dispatch staff, and we're working on having all of them. So we have a team in case somebody, you know, is, is the closest one or the quickest one to be able to put something like that out. Case in point, one night, Crewe was having a town meeting, and Tiffany Sisk called me. Normally, she puts out the messages for Crewe. This was about a year ago, and I was more than happy. So we tag teamed. We were able to sub with each other. Just a couple of things. I know you have the report in front of you, as always, send it to you every month. Feel free to ask me any questions. I won't read that. But I do want to emphasize a couple of things that both were on the report and not on the report because they're new developments. We do have a new director of communications, which is Tiana Towns. She comes to us from Lunenburg, and we've had some very good meetings. So I'm very, I'm very pleased with the meetings we've had so far. We're all working towards, you know, an improvement in the dispatch center. The Burkeville Elementary School was mentioned a few months back as to how much is being used. I have to tell you, it's a nugget. It's a golden nugget. Not only do we have a fire training center in Blackstone that's a very good prop, but the Burkeville School is a very good prop, as we say in training. We were able to realistically, you know, create things in there. So the drills we had Saturday, I had three mass casualty drills that we coordinated, and we had a really good turnout. It was a turnout like you would see on a Wednesday in Notaway County, so it was very realistic. We brought two of our dispatchers over, which I don't think has ever been done. It's been a while, and they were able to realistically sit in a classroom on a private channel so we wouldn't disrupt normal operations. And we were able to see everything and hear everything, just like it is every day in Notaway County. So that was, that worked out really well. The things that we went over, we had a school bus crash. I want to thank Jay Strausser for bringing out a Notaway public school bus and putting it at Burkeville Elementary. So we did a bus wreck versus a pickup. We also had a cafeteria fire dealing with burn injuries. And we also had a lab explosion, very similar to the one Dinwiddie had last year. So we used that as a mock-up. And all of those went well. Fire and EMS from Notaway County, everybody performed well. But the communications was really good on the radio, so I just want to pass that on. Also, I want to put out a kudos, and I'll close on this. Can't say enough about our part-time employee, Jimmy Falwell. He has been putting up the 911 signs that take them missing or damaged. And a lot of people don't know what's going on with those 911 signs. We are caught up. If anyone ever has a 911 sign, it's a constant fluid process, because as soon as we'll put up five, we may have five more that get reported next month. And that's just the way it is in every county, a rural county, 911 street signs. But Jimmy Falwell, who is a life member of Blackstone Fire and also a retired assistant chief from Fort Barfoot, has helped us tremendously. So Susan Tucker is who we report those signs to, and he's been able to catch us up. So I just want to pass that on. Good job, Jimmy. Everybody in the public, when you see Jimmy, you know, thank him for helping to put those in the ground and on the posts.
Yeah, absolutely. Very much appreciate it. And also heard nothing but great remarks about the mock disasters from, from some of those that was attended. So great job.
That's good to hear, and we'll have more. We'll build on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Zodi.
I really didn't have anything to add tonight because I've got about...
Then what are you up here for?
Twenty, yeah, moving the microphones, one of them. Okay, I'm done. But I just wanted to, unless y'all have any questions, I just want to give you two handouts.
Sure.
No rule or explanation, just hand them out randomly.
Actually, the first one is the draft form of the ordinance. It was posted for It was posted for public. I think you can serve your.
Thank you, Greg.
And then let me just go back the reverse way. This is the item I emailed you all about this morning on November 2nd through Go Virginia, about controlled environmental agriculture. This is the second meeting I went to regarding them, and it just kinda gives a rundown. What the schedule's gonna be like, and I hope y'all might be interested. I know everyone's working.
Thank you. All right. I'll, I'll share with you, it's fine.
But that's really all I had, which I'll have some stuff probably back and.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. And for those of you that don't know, Greg and I have a good working relationship, so that was not some cut at him. It's just, I don't want anybody to take that for nothing other than what it was, just Greg and I. Let's see you shortly. All right, constitutional officers, Sheriff Jones? Okay. Ms. Watchers?
You've got updated statistics now, and we currently got a report from charges. So the numbers we're giving the report, straight, may kind of fluctuate with the weather out, but we're gonna go down in that.
Okay, and just, just out of curiosity, how far are y'all into prosecuting misdemeanors yet?
Um, we're only doing some. So there's new staffing standards out, which say that to do felonies and misdemeanors, we need 3.51 attorneys. We currently have two of us. So right now, we are doing DUIs, domestics, assaults against juveniles, misdemeanors involving weapons. I'm forgetting two, sexual assaults that are misdemeanors. And then if there's others with special circumstances, I feel like I'm forgetting one category, protective order violations.
Okay.
So it's more than we can really handle, but I don't feel right not being involved in those cases.
Right, right. Well, it's moving, it's, it's moving forward, so.
We're trying. We still need the help.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, unfinished business, ladies and gentlemen, the animal shelter update. Mr. Van Orbach.
I'll do my best to maybe clarify, and, and for those of you in attendance that are interested in the animal control shelter, these are proposed changes, only proposed, and these were proposed by our architect and the contractors, that these are potential savings that could be had. I don't think they're at a position where certainly tonight, I would be asking y'all for any kind of action. These are still much to be discussed, much to go over. The purpose of having the item on the agenda tonight is, I really would like to understand what the budget for the project is. How much are we willing to spend on a dog panel? Not a dog panel, animal control shelter. How much would you like to spend on said structure? The information that was included, I think there was an old budget item, about $2.6 million, and I'm sure there's folks in the audience that can answer some questions, but if we're gonna accept this bid, I think by the time we meet the next time, the bid will probably be expired. And so I do think that we need to find a target. We need to find how much more or, or less we need to reduce or size down the project.
Well, Mr. Boswell asked that we all meet in order to, before we do anything with putting out a number as to how much we're gonna spend.
What's the deadline on the bid?
I think here about 45 days. Can't remember the exact date.
November 12th was the deal opening, wasn't it 60 days or?
November 12th, September 12th, and it was 60 days.
Okay.
So you're about, you're pushing 45 days.
All right, all right, so, all right, just, I'm, I'm gonna throw some at the wall, see if it sticks. I made a note here for a work session for two, for two things at our next work session. Cares and the radio tower. We can slot an hour for each one, because we've got, basically, we, we allow two, up to two hours for those work sessions. So does the board, let's see, that would be the second Thursday. Because the 19th.
They gonna give us enough time?
That's what I'm wondering. Should we move, do we need to move that work session date up, so we can have the discussion? And also, maybe not, if we need to take action at night, maybe not call it a work session, call it a special meeting.
Or continue this meeting?
Oh, we could do that.
And you can add items to the agenda when it comes, or when it continues.
Because what I would like, I mean, I just think what would be fair, obviously, is some of us haven't been in any care meetings. We've just kinda been letting the representatives be there, and, you know, they've been bringing back wonderful reports and everything. I think it's time, like you said, to clear the air, where we're gonna be, where we're gonna do, and what is local government's actual responsibility to the taxpayers? What do we need to tax them for? What can we, so we don't get ourselves in a bind, as to we taxed for this, but it was used for that? So we just wanna make sure that everybody has that opportunity to clear that air with any questions. So, board members, it'll be up to y'all. The, the work session, we can continue this meeting and address both those issues, because there's some concerns that Mr. Engle is gonna express here with the radio tower shortly. So let's, let's see if we can figure out a date, if we go, the regular work session date would be, bear with me here. Mr. Vaughn said, I heard him, Mr. Vaughn said, there he go again, another meeting. It would be November the 9th.
You have a conflict there.
You have a conflict?
Oh, you have a, all of us have a conflict. The emergency squad is having their dinner that night.
All right, and the 7th is the election, do y'all, election night, do y'all wanna go Wednesday, the 8th?
That's fine.
Just backing up.
I don't, I don't have any.
Can the cares committee be there Wednesday, the 8th? All right, what time, board members, 6:00, 7:00, 6:30? I'm good either time.
What's that on the Wednesday?
That's Wednesday, yes, ma'am.
You can do 6:00.
6 o'clock?
Yeah, it's good.
Cares, 6 o'clock? So November, Wednesday, November 8th, 6:00 PM. And we're also, even though this meeting will be continued, it'll be a special meeting, but we'll slot an hour for discussion for that?
When are we gonna meet?
We'll, we'll meet back here, because we're gonna need the room. We'll meet back here at, at the courthouse. And then the second hour, because what we do, we will not hold the work session on the 9th, obviously. We won't be holding the work session. So y'all go with that?
That's fine.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Van Orbach, would you have any objection to me sharing some excerpts from the email that came from Chris Phillips, the architect?
Oh, no, 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 that's all public information, absolutely. That'd be fine.
Uh, because I think it was just addressed to you and to me, maybe, so. He noticed in the board packet, tonight's board packet, that it included the value engineering options as presented by Norman Company. As previously discussed, these are just suggestions and estimates. All items need to be carefully vetted by the full design team to understand their impact and other factors such as code compliance, durability, first cost versus maintenance cost, et cetera. Please be sure the board understands that not all of these items would receive the design team's approval and recommendation. He also noted that the package included a slide from their presentation given in August 2022, indicating project budget at the time. The estimate was created assuming a cost per square foot only to be around $350, which at the time, they felt was a reasonable value. They've seen increased costs since that time, and a factor that was not considered at the time of the estimate was the lack of contractor and subcontractor interest and availability. That has played out in both bidding periods, having only received one bid each time. The impact of that lack of availability of interested contractors has driven the cost higher than anyone could have expected. So they, I just thought there were relevant considerations that he presented. Maybe we can forward this email to the board before the work session to ensure that.
Okay, all right. All right, the next item then would be the Nottaway water line issue, Mr. Van Orbach.
Thank you. Item that's before you, obviously, there's a lot to talk about here. But as I understand it, in 2021, there was a resolution adopted by this board in which it, and I'll read a bit of this resolution, and this, again, was adopted on the 15th of April, 2021, and says, "Well-known that the availability of affordable and reliable public water can provide public health benefits and attract economic development." That's true. "Regional water supply systems present an opportunity to take advantage of economies of scale in neighboring jurisdictions, water supply assets, to provide the benefits of a public water system at lower cost to users than smaller localized systems." Whereas Prince Edward County has engaged in discussions with the town of Burkeville, Crewe, and Blackstone, and certain institutional entities in Nottaway County to explore the concept of a regional public water system capable of supplying water from Sandy River in Prince Edward County to users in Nottaway County and elsewhere. In accordance with Virginia Code 15.22143, Prince Edward County has notified the board supervisors that at the appropriate time, Prince Edward intends to request consent from Nottaway County to construct and operate a public water system in Nottaway County to serve federal or state institutional entities or any municipality that finds it beneficial to be served by the proposed regional system, which enters into a water supply agreement with Prince Edward County for that purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the board supervisors of the county of Nottaway, Virginia expresses its support for further discussions among Prince Edward County, Nottaway County, institutional entities and municipalities in Nottaway County, and possibly other parties regarding regional public water supply system that would benefit many entities and parties, including the citizens of Nottaway County. When this was adopted, I think the information that was provided, the decisions of Nottaway County, was not accurate. It certainly wasn't true, and it was certainly intended to harm the citizens of Nottaway County discreetly and without transparency. And I would highly recommend that the board supervisors consider revoking this resolution, because the data in the resolution is not accurate, and the way and the method why it was coerced by Prince Edward County's county administrator and consultant was dishonest. And I think that this board ought to revoke this resolution as soon as possible, if not immediately.
Well, Mr. Van Orbach, that was, that was the reason why I asked to have this item put on here, because simply put, it has not been forthcoming. And I would ask for someone to move for this board to revoke the resolution, grant and support to Prince Edward County's proposal to explore the concept of a mutually beneficial regional public water system.
And I would add that Prince Edward's mutually beneficial public water system is only beneficial to Prince Edward County.
So do we have a motion as I stated?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's been revoked. Thank you, board members. I think we all feel a sense of relief with that one. The crew boundary line adjustment, I believe the, that was placed on there, and as I understand it, I know Ms. Andrea Kelly and staff worked diligently to get all this information up to the attorneys to be prepared to go in front of the, the court for ratification. Was there anything different, Ms. Kelly? Are we ready to go? Yes, ma'am, all right. Well, thank you for your work on that, I'm greatly appreciative. The subdivision vacation. Mr. Zodi.
All right, we have two resolutions in front of us this evening. I would ask that you you take, you take a look at the second resolution about the appointment first. There's a method to my madness. And it's basically doing what should have been done when I first started here. This is just making the official appointment up for me as planning economic development director slash subdivision agent zoning administrator, and whatever else y'all wanna throw at me.
All right.
For the official, I mean, this is relevant as, as recommended by our council.
Okay, um, that resolution is, is that this one right here?
The resolution is at everybody's desk, both resolutions, and there are two. The first of which is titled, "The Resolution Endorsing and Ratifying Prior Actions of the County's Current and Former Planning and Economic Development Directors, Confirming and Ratifying the Appointment of Greg Zodi at the County's Planning and Economic Development Director." The second of which, the second resolution that is here before you, is a resolution approving the vacation of certain plats prior to the sale of any lots shown thereon, and authorizing the county's subdivision agent and zoning administrator to execute instruments of vacation. So I do believe that the first resolution, and I read the title, would need to be adopted first.
I, I think that'd be pragmatic. Yes, sir.
And also, Greg has included surveys, copies of surveys, and the plat affidavits that were recorded or provided to the clerk of the circuit court. And either, are they two plats or the same plat?
Two plats.
Two separate plats?
Yes. From October 31st, 2022.
Got you. All right, Mr. Van Orbach, I, I'll read this first one here for you for.
You get the first one, get the second one.
Okay. All right, whereas, and board members, we'll need a motion after this. "Whereas the board supervisors of Nottaway County, Virginia, has appointed persons as county administrator and may delegate to the county administrator all powers and duties not prohibited by law, whereas the board supervisors delegated to the county administrator the authority to hire and appoint all of the county employees, including the planning and economic development director. The planning and economic development director is the appointed, designated, and authorized agent of the board supervisors with respect to the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance, and is therefore the county's subdivision agent and zoning administrator. The board supervisors hired, appointed Philip S.T. Costin as the county administrator again in August 23rd, 2021. The county administrator, and on behalf of the board, Mr. Costin hired, appointed Greg Zodi as the county's planning and economic development director. Greg Zodi has since, Greg Zodi has since that time been employed, appointed as the county's planning and economic development director. Now therefore be it resolved by the board supervisors of Nottaway County, Virginia, as follows. The board supervisors affirms the prior hiring appointment of Greg Zodi as the county's planning and economic director, development director, including as the board's zoning administrator and subdivision agent. The board supervisor endorses, and if appropriate, ratifies any prior actions of the county's current and former planning and economic development director taken as subdivision agent and zoning administrator pursuant to the applicable job description, county ordinances, and state statutes. Notwithstanding the legality and validity of Greg Zodi's current position as the appointed, designated, and authorized agent of the board supervisors with respect to the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance, the board confirms, and if appropriate, ratifies Mr. Costin's appointment of Greg Zodi as the county's planning and economic development director, and accordingly, as the county's subdivision agent and zoning administrator. The resolution endorsing and ratifying prior actions of the county's current and former planning and economic development directors and confirming and ratifying the appointment of Greg Zodi as the county's planning and economic development director. Board members, I need a motion to adopt this resolution endorsing and ratifying prior actions of the county's current and former planning and economic development directors and confirming and ratifying the appointment of Greg Zodi as the county's planning and economic development director." All right, we got, we got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I guess I get to read the second one?
Yep.
All right, here we go. "Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 15.22271, the owners of property may declare a plat to be vacated before the sale of any lots therein by recording a written instrument in the circuit court clerk's office with the consent of the board supervisors or its authorized agent. And whereas two plats were previously recorded in the Nottaway County Circuit Court Clerk's office in 2022, being a plat entitled plat showing two parcels of land standing in the name of Sandra B. Morissette, prepared by J.L. Surveying LLC dated October 27th, 2022, which plat was recorded on October 31st, 2022, is instrument number 220001728, in a plat entitled plat showing a division of land standing in the name of Sandra B. and Chrissy L. Morissette, Jr., prepared by J.L. Surveying LLC dated October 27th, 2022, which plat was recorded on October 31st, 2022, is instrument number 220001729, together referred to as the plats. And whereas no lots shown on the plats have been sold, and whereas Nottaway County filed a complaint in Nottaway County Circuit Court related in part to the plats, being case number CL22-. CL22-460. And whereas the appointed, designated, and authorized agent for the board of supervisors of Notaway County with respect to the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance is Greg Zodi. However, due to the involvement of the Plats in ongoing litigation, the county subdivision agent Greg Zodi desires the consent of the board of supervisors for vacation of the Plats. And whereas the board of supervisors finds that Plats of the, that vacation of the Plats is in the best interests of the county, and resolves certain violations of the county's subdivision ordinance that are the subject of case number CL22-460. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of supervisors of the county of Notaway, Virginia as follows. The board of supervisors consents to vacation of the Plats recorded as instrument number 220001728, and instrument number 220001729, in the Notaway County Circuit Court Clerk's Office, together referred to as the Plats, by recordation of a written instrument in a form approved by the county attorney and signed on behalf of the board of supervisors by its appointed, designated, and authorized subdivision agent and zoning administrator Greg Zodi. A resolution approving the vacation of certain Plats prior to sale, oh, excuse me, oh, excuse me, thereon and authorizing the county subdivision agent and zoning administrator to execute instruments of vacation. That may have been the title, I apologize. The board of supervisors authorizes and directs its appointed, designated, and authorized subdivision agent and zoning administrator Greg Zodi to sign instruments of vacation necessary to vacate the Plats in a form approved by the county attorney.
So board members, I need a, board members, I need a resolution, a motion to approve the resolution for the vacation of certain Plats prior to the sale of any lot shown there thereon or authorizing the county subdivision agent and zoning administrator to execute instruments of vacation.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Employee compensation, Mr. Van Orvick.
Employee compensation, we met with the constitutional officers today at five o'clock, and as you know, the state budget has been approved, and there are several adjustments to the compensation boards, compensation to the county for certain positions in the sheriff, clerk of the circuit court, common law attorney, commission revenue and treasures offices. We do have those documents, we met, I think they're genuine, and across-the-board agreement with those figures though. We will be bringing to the board of supervisors a pretty substantial appropriation next month to include those new monies into the county budget and appropriating them such so they can be spent. There is one question that I, two questions, but the first of which applies specifically to the constitutional officers. There are certain positions in the constitutional officers departments that are locally funded, okay? As I understand it, July 1, the state provided a 5% raise for those constitutional officers' positions that are reimbursed by the state. Those positions in the constitutional officers' departments that are reimbursed locally also receive that 5% raise, okay? By action of the board or action during the course of the budget. This new budget information increases the comp board compensated positions an additional 2% to go into effect December 1st, 2023. First point I'd like to ask, and for clarification from the board, is it the intention of the board for those positions that are locally funded? And you can't tell the difference between a state-funded deputy and a locally-funded deputy, they all look the same. Is it the intention of this board to also pass on any additional cost to locally, or additional salary to any locally-funded constitutional position?
If they're working, they need to be paid. That's my position.
In the past, we have done that. That's the consensus of the board.
Yes.
Item number two then. Item number two is local employees, and these are local employees, a building official, Andrea, people that work under, directly under the county administrator. In July, did not receive a raise of any kind, they didn't get the 5%. Last time we talked, last month, the discussion was, have the evaluations been completed and concluded, and they have been, okay? After that meeting, we spoke, the department heads that still needed to do evaluations, completed those evaluations, okay? I'd like to resolve the matter and find out the consensus from the board of supervisors, what your intentions are for the employees that work under the county administrator. Doesn't apply to me, but anybody that works under the county administrator's authority, animal control, building official, finance, those kinds of things. Constitutional officers' employees received a 5% in July, an additional 2% December 1st, and these other locally-funded employees have received no salary compensation.
All right, are you asking for that to be retroactive back to July 1st?
I'm not asking for the 7%, but what I would ask is that you provide the 5% retroactive back to July 1st.
The other thing is with the evaluations, where there are recommendations of percentages due to employee performance.
No. I don't think the evaluation that I've read include that kind of information. What they do have is, is performance goals in different setting, and satisfactory, unsatisfactory, good, excellent, that kind of thing. But no, there was not a 3%, 4%, 5%, any of that sort of thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm all in favor of ensuring that these employees are appropriately compensated. I wondered if it would, do you think it would make sense for the board, before we vote on something, to have an understanding of what it actually means to our budget, what the total dollar figure?
Sure, absolutely.
Because either way, with the ratification, it'd be retroactive back to July 1.
Right. And it would go into effect, I would anticipate, at the same time the comp board's out, which is the December 1st, okay?
Yeah. So if we can get that, if we can get that number, I think, were we talking about the unfunded deputies or just the ones under the county administrator?
I think the locally-funded deputies, I think I got the direction from the 2%.
Right.
And we're moving forward. Like I said, you can't tell one from the other when they're chasing a crook.
Right.
But I think this would apply specifically to landfill, animal control, building official, folks that report to them.
So at our continued meeting, can we just be given that information if not, if it's not available before?
Yeah, and it's the total figure of what those positions would.
Yes.
Right. What this increase would mean, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if it's, if we have a minute within that two-hour time span, and we can get this information beforehand, if there seems to be an agreement, we can go ahead and...
I think we can find an employer who'd be happily to, happily provide this information to you.
Yes, but, but thank you.
Well, the state forever, took forever to approve their budget.
They did. Yeah, they were very late.
Yes, sir. But yes, good catch, Ms. Chalken. You definitely want that information to see where we might need to go, because Mr. Abbott's gonna want to know where that money's coming from.
With all due respect, sir, he said an appropriation.
There you go. All right, so new business, the VEDP pre-application request.
Greg's coming to the podium, and you can ask questions if you have them, but I certainly support this. 2024 Business Ready Site Program, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and this is simply a request or an authorization to make application. And there were two options, and I think the second option is the one that Greg's recommending, and it's called a site development grant. And the only thing I'm not sure of, Greg, is what is the amount that would be requested and what would be the match? Do you know on that second? The first option was a $5,000, and that was pretty clear.
Right. Well, that brings me to the status of our county, and Ms. Yates had mentioned it several months ago about our poverty levels and whatnot. We're considered a double-distressed county because our unemployment is generally higher than the state average, as well as our poverty rates. So what we would face, well, not face, what we would benefit from, and I mean that in the best possible way, is that we would get, if we're in a package of funding, a three-to-one match.
Three-to-one.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So for every dollar, every $3 they put in, we put in one?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
25%.
Yeah, 25%.
And I just wanted to give you an illustration, and it kind of shows, it's a very solidly regional issue, from south, south side Virginia, and southwest Virginia.
Thank you.
I'll get back to the microphone, I'm sorry. Here you go.
So again, what we're asking, and Greg has detailed in his memo, is simply permission to make application. And a site development, and I would anticipate logically, we would try to find certainly one site at Pickett.
Yes.
And logically, and maybe if there is something in the Crew Burkeville, in the upper end to kind of spread the cheer around a little bit.
That's correct, Mr. Van Orvick. I think that we should really, this should be a EDC-driven project. I think this is a perfect opportunity for us as a county to all work together, all three towns and the county, the unincorporated areas of the county.
Greg, you had a, I mean...
A slideshow.
Yeah, I had read this. Is there, is there a target dollar figure? I know you said the three-to-one, but was there, during this application, is it a million? Is it 500,000, 50,000, like?
What would it, bottom line, what would the county's match end up being?
Yeah.
I think, I think it really depends on what we pursue. I, there's not like the general.
And this is, this is, this is not to accept a grant, this is just to apply, correct?
That's correct. We are not committing to any funding at this point. This is simply saying, hey, we're interested in building our economy.
That was the only question that I have.
Yes, sir.
Board members, I'd be in favor of moving forward with this if any of them...
With the application.
Yes.
Yep.
If anybody wants to make a motion to grant staff the authority to move forward with this.
So moved.
All right, I'll take, I heard Mr. Vaughn first and Ms. Simmons with the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Zodi remains at the podium, and he's going to present you with some information concerning the VATI process, which is with River Street and West Piedmont Planning District Commission.
Around here, we call that Vaddy Grant.
Vaddy.
Of course, from the middle of the west, like me, it's Vaddy. So what this is, again, this is another pre-application to apply for funding next year with, through River Streets Network and the Western, West Piedmont Planning District Commission. Again, we are not encumbering, we're simply telling Dr. Holmes at DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, that we are interested. Now, this next round in fiscal year '24, it's, it's really to serve the underserved areas of the county, because we know that there are some, I mean, more than some. There, we're first going to go through the state for funding, because we received like almost $2 billion, I think, something, something in that general area.
Yes, sir.
It's a significant amount of money. Actually, that's the national level. But the project is really better known as BEAD, and that's Broadband Equity Accessibility Development. I think that's the full acronym. We're, what we're, we don't know what our match will be or anything like that. We have to see how our application fares, if our application is accepted after I submit the pre-application.
Correct me if I'm wrong, so far, I don't believe with the first two rounds, we had no match with any of that, I don't believe.
Actually, we contributed, and that's the next item on the agenda, or the fourth, fourth one down. All we're doing for this is just saying, hey, we're interested.
Right.
And we want to participate.
I think everybody on this board knows that we want to get every road service with, with...
Yes, sir.
Broadband. So at this point, board members, can we get a motion to approve them being able to go ahead and move forward with this application?
So moved.
A second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
Okay, the next item are the easements. And first, I would like to say, I met with Robert Taylor, he's the program manager, for lack of a better term, with River Street Networks. And he, he and I spoke last week at some length about this particular pre-application, but also invited him to our November 16th meeting, because you all had asked about what the projects, what are they doing, where are we, and whatnot. Well, this leads into this particular memorandum regarding the Vaddy easements. But I brought this to y'all's attention last month, and what it is, we own two of the three, well, we, the board owns two of the three sites, the sites at Lewiston Plankton, Lewiston Plank Road, and then, and Burkeville, it's part of that too, I believe. It's in the corporate limits of Burkeville, rather. And then there's one on the eastbound on 460, and that's right next to Jennings Town Road. And the third one, the local resource authority owns that, on Cox Road. And I'm really excited, after mentioning this to Robert, is the fact that now we have an area where we'll be able to serve our industrial park, Picket Park. And that is something, in my opinion, that we desperately need to, to make us more attractive, since we don't have pipeline or anything like that coming in to serve the county. I think it's necessary for us to move, truly move forward. So what I'm asking is for the board to just discuss, if you all have any questions, we just need to get this, these easements approved, reviewed by an attorney, I think it'd be River Streets attorney, and of course, if we chose to use counsel, we could use our counsel, to work out a lease agreement for each of the three sites, and then sign those off, and then we can begin the process of construction.
All right, can we get their attorney to do the work?
Yes.
We only need a view.
A review. Yes, sir.
If we can also have the motion include authorizing the chairman to execute on behalf of the county.
All right, is there, is there, did y'all have a suggested motion in there?
No, I, I'm sorry, no. I don't put...
So you needed to approve the easements, need a motion to approve the easements as presented by Greg Zodi, with chairman's authorization to sign?
The easements will be long-term located at the courthouse, they'll be recorded, and logically, the chairman should sign something that'll be recorded like that.
Yeah, and each, just for y'all's information, each site is approximately 55 feet for the area that they're going to do the construction on. It's, I think it's modest, a modest ask, but we will get a little bit of revenue for that.
All right, so board members, can we get a motion to approve the easements as presented by Greg Zodi, with the authorization of the chairman to sign all necessary documents?
I saw a motion.
It's like y'all going to sleep up here.
It took a while.
All right, so do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, do we have any discussion? And the reason why I'm asking, because it took a while to make that motion.
I want to ask Mr. Zodi one question. I'm looking, I'm looking at the site on Lewiston Plank. It looks to me like this is where the dumpsters are located, and you go down in front of where the gentleman who watches the dumpsters goes in front of his area into the site, is that correct?
Yeah, it goes, it comes into the front of the site off of 460.
Right.
And then it goes, it would be behind where the dumpsters are, where sort of...
Right. But I see the easement, it looks to me like it goes down in front of the gentleman's shelter that he sits in, and it goes down into the area where the thing will be, right?
Yes, sir. And that'd just be, just an easement, of course, it would be outside of that a little bit.
Right.
But Mr. Cox, with the engineering firm, he did mention that they would request, and I believe I've mentioned it to the board before, that there'd be additional lock put on the dual, I think it's a dual-entry lock, where they would have a cop be able to get in.
Right.
Okay. But that's the only issue. And I walk the sites, and that's probably the best location, because it's downward sloping on the western side, and then on the kind of the northern side, it's a steep slope, and you're starting to encroach into VDOT right of way.
Right.
And it looks like there's floodplain down on the western side as well.
Okay. Board members, was there any other concerns or questions? Okay, here none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. This, and this, Mr. Rourke, this last item with the Vaddy agreement, the Second Amendment, this is simply memorializing what we agreed to and what we committed the $700,000 for, for the 2023 Vaddy application. And I asked Mr. Van Orvick to sign off on this. We had to get it in, but this is, it adds nothing to us, there's no additional liability. It simply states what we've done, and that's something that we had to sign in order for us to continue forward, because we were awarded the 2.7 million, I think it was.
And we're asking for ratification of my execution of the agreement.
So this, this is the Second Amendment to the agreement that we're looking at.
And we're asking for ratification of my execution of the agreement.
So this, this is the Second Amendment to the agreement that we're looking at.
Minor standing, yes ma'am.
And we've compared this with our first agreement to make sure it's all aligned with it.
Yes.
And y'all feel confident that it's, it's in line, correct?
Yes.
So recommendation from staff is to approve this.
Yes, sir. It is the recommendation of staff to ratify, or the board to ratify.
Okay. All right, board members, I need a motion to ratify the VATI amendment to the River Street contract.
I'll move.
I second.
I'm still awake.
All right. All right, board members, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the Board of Equalization, Mr. Van Orvick, thank you, Mrs. Zodi.
Thank you very much for your patience.
We have received some communication from the Commissioner of Revenue and it is that time that we need to, the board supervisors need to start making appointments to the Board of Equalization. As you know, the reassessment is ongoing, the appeal process is through this, this body is appointed in 2017, Grayson Mullins, Stephen Haley, Marvin Love, Richard Rather, and William Collins served on this. Of that number, District Two, Mr. Haley, and, and I'm parroting what Susan Tucker provided for me because she did the legwork on this, but Stephen Haley said he would serve again. And Liz Allen Lee, if agreeable to the board and pleasing to the board, has agreed that she would serve in District Four. The District One position, I don't think Susan's been able to reach Mr. Mullins. In the District Three position, I don't believe Susan's been able to contact Mr. Love. I do believe in District Five, Dee Dunkinson III has stated that he's agreeable to serve on the Equalization Board.
That's correct. She sent me an email today confirming that.
Okay, there you go. So District Two and District Four, it appears do not, or excuse me, District One and District Three appear that they do not have individuals who have indicated a willingness or who have.
I would contact.
Been in touch.
Let me say this, this is the first time since I've been on the board in 30 years that someone other than this board appointed these people, recommended the appointment to the judge. It's still going to have to go to the judge.
Oh, absolutely.
But this should have been done by each other board members.
Okay.
And.
Each other board member knows the people in their district.
Yes, sir. And if you'd like to make those changes, and those are certainly, these are not in stone, these have not been sent to the judge?
I'd like to do that.
Okay. And the expectation is by the November Board of Supervisors meeting that these appointments should.
All right.
Or recommendations for appointments should be made.
I'll see if I can get in touch with Mr. Mullins to see if he's willing to serve and if not, I'll come up with someone for District One.
And I'd do the same with District Three, get in contact with Mr. Love.
All right, good enough. The audit preparation was.
I have before you an engagement letter dated October 2nd, 2023, from VML VACO Finance. It is, was submitted to me by a gentleman named John Montoro. Mr. Montoro has been a local government accounting specialist for many, many years. In fact, he was Amelia County's auditor at one point. Mr. Montoro, Director of Accounting Services, would provide us audit preparation services and I must say, we need some help getting ready for the audit. The audit must be prepared and submitted to the state by middle of December and Mr. Montoro specializes in helping with these things at a service, an hourly rate of $135 an hour for remote and $40 an hour for onsite work. I am recommending the engagement of Mr. Montoro and VML VACO in order to prepare for an audit that, because of lapses in staffing and that sort of thing, we need to get ourselves in a position where we let Paul lead to come and do his magic. And right now, we're not able to provide Mr. Lee with all the information he may need.
All right, and just one question for clarification, are, are we within our procurement procedure to move forward with this?
I think because it's an hourly rate proposal and due to the time, if you'd like me to, we can declare that as an emergency procurement if, if necessary, but that would require posting on Eva and that sort of thing. But logically and typically, this would be done through an RFP process, but indeed, I hate to tell you, but you don't have time.
That we, we feel confident that this is an emergency and this is no.
And if there's any adoption of any resolution declaring this an emergency, we will bring that to you at the continued meeting.
Okay.
Okay? And that's typically what you need to do, but I'm sorry to tell you guys, we don't have time to, to do that. And it is emergency and I can tell you that it is indeed.
All right, board members, I would need a motion to approve under New Business J6, the letter of engagement for accounting services as presented to this board tonight.
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Landfill.
As I understand, the Notaway County landfill is required to provide a five-year update or a solid waste management plan, five-year certification. I apologize. And that has been done and it is prepared and ready for submittal. It is closed for your consideration and review and we would like authorization to submit or have our consultant, TRC, formerly Draper Aden, to submit this five-year plan extension or certification to the Department of Environmental Quality.
All right, board members, we need a motion to authorize TRC to submit this application to DEQ.
So move.
Can I get a second? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The Piedmont Regional Jail invoices.
I don't know if there's action, this is more informational.
Demand.
Prime is all.
You worried about your legal fees, Sonny. A quarter payment, a one-quarter to the Piedmont Regional Jail Authority for Notaway County inmate days for the second quarter fiscal year 2024 is $563,992. That is to house jail inmates, nothing more. That's all that does is $563,992.
Does the board wish to build a jail? No, stop.
And that's a quarterly payment. Now, I think it's in line with the previous quarter's payment, but far in excess of last year's payments, which were in the $300,000 range. As old as I am, I served on the jail board in the late 90s and the early 2000s as the county administrator in Amelia County, and jail services cost zero. There was no charge to any community for the jail. You probably remember that.
I remember.
There was no charge.
All right, how do we get back to that?
You gotta start picking up federal inmates, they pay well, immigration, naturalization services pays well.
But we lost they.
And they, those have been lost. And this is a huge number for the county. It's a $2 million annual expense, whereas 20 years ago, it was a zero expense.
Are you saying there's really nothing we can do?
I don't think there's anything you can do about it, but we may need to come back and do some appropriations, as Sonny has pointed out on other items. I don't think the budget includes this full amount.
Yeah, and part of this was after the escape where they pulled the federal inmates out, after the escape.
I remember that.
Yeah.
And I thought during the budget process, somebody had indicated to us that this was going to increase by over a million dollars for this year.
That rings a serious bell and I've been beating my head against it since I read that. And, yeah.
But it wasn't.
I don't remember the budget negotiations, but.
But it wasn't incorporated into the budget.
I don't think that full amount is incorporated in the budget. Yeah, I think it's going to require an appropriation of sorts. And I think the cash will either have to come from other activities and you move it internally through the budget, or look at your reserve fund and, and pay this, but this is in excess of the expected.
That's crazy.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tremendous figure.
Yes, it is.
Well, and the other thing with that too is, do we have to move anything until the fourth quarter?
No, you do not. In fact, Blackstone, we adopt, through the course of the year, we will do small appropriations. But at the end of the year, the state code does require that if you exceed your budget by more than 1%, you have to have a public hearing associated with your appropriation. And Blackstone just did that last month because we exceeded by 1% our actual budgeted or original appropriation. Now, some of it was refinancing debt, some of it was other things where payments were made through a revenue anticipation note with Citizens Bank, but it still reflected a 1% increase in the town's, not necessarily spending, but money that passed through our, our budget during the course of the year. So I would anticipate certainly no later than the end of the fourth quarter or just after the end of the fourth quarter that, that appropriation maybe be made if we don't do it sooner.
Do you know off the top of your head what year-to-year increase was incorporated into the budget for this Piedmont regional?
I don't know right offhand and I apologize for that, but I can find out. I certainly can, but I, I think the payments.
I know they discussed this going up $1 million this year.
The payments last year were in the $300,000 range.
Right.
And so that may make sense, that maybe might have closed from the 300s to the 560s, over four, that's a million dollars. So I, I think your memory is probably pretty good.
Yes.
On that one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But I will provide to you last year's four-quarter payments and this year's four-quarter payments and what was budgeted.
What was budgeted is what I need.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
All right, y'all have any more questions on that one, board members? All right, I will say that there's one part of good news in these three invoice summaries from Sam's Anderson, is that kind of day-to-day operational one was under $2,500 for the month. So.
Big improvement.
Yeah, big improvement.
The previous month was $28,000. This month was $2,400. And if you notice, we don't have our attorney sitting in the, in the audience at every meeting and we're trying to be more judicious about picking up the phone and asking for advice and that sort of thing. So these will be paid, they will be put into the, I did not pay them last month, which was the previous balances. I wanted to talk to you guys and let you guys know, and I think Sonny picked up on this, where it was over $50,000 for the month. But this month, for example, the Stewart and Caldwell suits, and in fairness to everybody, when they're going to court and making filings and that sort of thing, that will influence the number of hours and any attorney can tell you this is on an hourly, but last month was $57,000. This month is $8,000 and I'm rounding the numbers. General counsel services, and this is just picking up the phone and wishing them a happy birthday because the attorney's billed for that sort of thing. $28,000 last month, $2,400 this month. Illegal subdivision plat, and it may be a better way to title that, but I think you just acted on some of that tonight with the, I think it's on Green Hill Road if I'm not mistaken, last month, $19,000, $3,800 this month. So we can try to get these legal fees down some and by not picking the phone up as much and I think that hopefully staff will support us on that and continue in the right direction. But again, these are not for voting up or down, they are just kind of reflective of some of the efforts we're trying to make to reduce some of those costs, but that jail invoice was a little bit of a surprise.
Well, the board members too, I want, I would like to get y'all's consensus here tonight. I know previously we had voted to only authorize anyone to contact the county's attorney through the county administrator. And just as a consensus here tonight, I, even though the previous county administrator's gone, I, I still like to have that in place if y'all would as well because that was the vote we had taken.
Yep, and we'll, and we met with the constitutional officers earlier today and discussed that we want to continue that practice and all, all agreeable and without, without an issue. And I think at the time, I think it was interim between Mr. Costin and myself and I think a decision was made when they needed an answer. So we've had that conversation and we'll, we'll rectify.
Good deal. The CRC Regional Economic Development Organization, the, guys, I know we had some conversations at a work session about some concerns about who we might be possibly working with, with that Go Virginia.
Redo.
Redo.
Right.
And Ms. Foster's here tonight as well, and I think what, what she's probably wanting to know is what's the board's intentions as far as the redo? Because we haven't paid it, but the board did make a motion to support the $2,500. And as I understand it, Timmons is not the only consultant in that pool there, there's four of them. So is, is it the board's consensus tonight to continue to move forward since we've already got the money invested in it? We've had.
Would there be any additional monies that would be made available that Timmons could? They would not profit from this decision in any form or fashion, correct?
Well, they have, they have a contract.
Beyond what they already have?
Yeah, no, because there's no additional.
There's nothing additional that would possibly go to Timmons.
Not part of this project, no. They, in fact, they've already completed their work.
All right, you said 2,500. I thought it was 2,500.
I was not at that meeting, Mr. Chairman.
2,500?
2,500 is what it's costing Notaway County. This was a grant we got from Go Virginia and seven counties and Longwood University put up $2,500. The Commonwealth Regional Council put up $10,000 of cash for this project. The majority of the work's already been done, will actually be done in January. But we really want to make sure you, you keep moving along to, to be part of this project. There'll come a point in the future where you'll, there'll be a presentation of the entire project and at that point, you can decide, all of the localities will decide, do they want to stand up this new regional economic development organization?
Okay.
Because five of my seven counties right now aren't a member of one, which includes Notaway as well. So this is a real need in our region. I'm sure if you talked to, and you were talking about VDP earlier, applying to them, if you talked to them, they would tell you, encourage you to really think hard about being a part of an organization like that.
Well, and.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I serve on that committee.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Vaughn and I have done that for years and I would certainly recommend that we stay in the redo along with the other six counties.
I concur, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah.
Absolutely concur. It was the board, is that y'all's consensus as well?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, I don't really need any action because you're already in it.
That's right.
I just came because I knew there were some concerns.
Yes, ma'am. And we greatly appreciate your efforts and everything and we're sorry that there's this ugliness in the room at times, but we'll get through it.
Okay, I'll get with the staff then, there are some things I need to move forward, but I'll get with Philip and Greg to get those things.
Ms. Foster does an excellent job.
Oh, yeah.
We go back to the old Piedmont Planning District Committee. I was representing Blackstone at that time, yes. You remember that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your service.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Yeah. Yeah. All right, and board members, I know we had under new business resolutions, but we've already did that. We did that with Mr. Zodi and then we have the radio tower to discuss if Mr. Ingram would like to take off with that, sir.
I'll start, you correct me if I'm wrong. Chairman Rourke and I met with Mr. Chief Shoot Burkeville and Mr. E.B. Fisher of the Notaway County Emergency Squad discussing the radio situation. I, having come into this a couple of months ago and had no idea about what was going on, so they wanted us to meet with them and, and give us their feelings about the system, et cetera. Both of those gentlemen from their organizations said that they were satisfied with what they had now. They said they might need to have an upgrade. I think Chief Shoot said, what, $40,000?
Thirty-five, forty thousand.
Thirty-five, forty thousand, he could upgrade his service. Mr. Fisher said that the squad could do anything they wanted to. He said, you know, everything's going to have limitations, but they, one of their key, chief concerns was if a squad vehicle goes out of Notaway County under the proposed new system, they would not be able to communicate once they get past the boundary of Notaway County. So in other words, if you ride in the ambulance to South Hill or to Farmville or to Richmond, they can't communicate once they get outside of the boundary of the county. John and I, well, again, I'm new to this, I don't know anything about radios, I know how to turn it on in my car and turn it off. So they were enlightening us on, on several things and I just think maybe. And I just think maybe with a $7 million figure looking at us, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Mr. Hyde. I intend to do that. But Mr. Shoot mentioned maybe we could go and reduce it to 3 million. With, have the place, I think it's a 700 system, is that right?
700 system's the new one.
Yeah.
The legacy is the current one.
Right. And their comment was, we could have that and, you know, when we get to a point where we need it. But right now, they were both satisfied with what they had. And that's why I want to talk to you and see what the deal is. I haven't had any conversation with Crew Volunteer Fire Department or with Blackstone. So, and of course, Sheriff Jones. So, I'm in limbo. I mean, when they started talking about $40,000 as opposed to 7 million, I'm going, keep talking. So, I, you know, I just think maybe we need to push back, hold back a little bit, you know? Is there a timeframe on this thing, buddy?
Is the meeting next, that, this continued meeting that we're talking about, I wrote it down, up in the front, for Wednesday, November the 8th at 6:00 p.m., we could do the first hour with the Carers Group, and then after that, if we can get you guys in the room. One of the first things that was absolutely discussed is neither one of them said they were for nor against. They wanted a complete package. And everybody sitting in that room said that the number one concern is we want to make sure that a deputy, because it seemed like there was an issue with the deputies' handhelds back and forth, if a deputy's in a room fighting with a meth head, I want them to get a call out. So, we got to fix that and make sure that our deputies are safe and they're coming back home. Beyond that, we need to look into some of this other stuff because as we looked more into it, apparently with this core system, this was just some things that was expressed to us, and we need to figure out what is what. But like a lightning strike could take that whole core system out, and everybody's going to be scrambling and looking for legacy radios. So, we want to get to that. We want to get to it sooner rather than later because we know there was a grant application. We know that every time a deputy goes out, their safety is at jeopardy. So, can we get everybody in the room? And essentially, at 7:00 p.m., that'll be a continued meeting at 7:00 p.m., we'll take off with this item here. If that'll work for y'all. Good, right?
I think you should talk to the whole committee.
Yes.
Because we have 11 people representing fire.
And we want them here, if we can get them all in there.
Law enforcement, and you talk to two.
All right.
Two out of 11. And I think we've been in it for a year, one year, so...
Well, it's going to be in our lap pretty quick, so we just want to, the sooner we can get the conversation, the more focused we can get the conversations, the sooner we can make that decision.
Yes, we should have a group discussion, right.
Okay. So, if we can do that, we do that. So, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
I just, I want to catch up with you sometime.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
Okay. Yep, the last move, and the last thing was the board's salary. And since this board's here, you know, there's a new board coming in. As new boards come in, they cannot discuss salary increases or anything like that. So, I thought it may be incumbent upon us if there was any discussion, because I do not believe you can have this discussion after the election.
I think you can have the discussion, but you cannot take action or create a new salary structure after the election. It has to be the board prior to, to act on it, to go into effect on the 1st of January for the new board. So, that is correct.
And that salary would stand for four years.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, is there any discussion that y'all want to have on the board salaries for the next incoming board?
Do, I think that's something we should look at. Can we, is there any way we can get comparative information as to what other, in our peer group of counties, what board compensation is, just to see where we're standing?
Including benefits?
Well, and actually, to that point, come the 7th, this is all moot.
Come November 7th? That's why we won't meet again before that.
I would have to check to make sure that even after the election, and they haven't been sworn in or taken office, that that would be the case. Let me, let me double check that. I think that it may change some opinions, it may change certain things, but I'm not sure that that necessarily is the case, just being elected and not sworn in or have taken office, because the term of office doesn't begin until January. Let me double check on that.
Right.
It has to be done by this board.
It has to be done by this board while you're still in office. That's correct.
Well, like I said, I just wanted to have the conversation, and I know the amount of work that I've put in and some of you guys have put in, but just me personally, I would not be in favor of that increase. That's just, I just want to say that now. I just want to get that out there, but I'm only one. So, that's me.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'll bring back the information to you.
Okay.
As quick as I can. And if I do find out in the interim that there's going to be a problem with doing it before or after the actual election date, I'll let you guys know that as soon as possible, and we can act accordingly if you like.
Okay. Y'all have any other thing on that thing? All right, we need a motion to accept the recommendations for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and y'all's correspondence items is in your package as well. And Mr. Norbeck, do you have a report that you'd like to finish off here?
Very brief. I'd like you to look to the back of the room. There's a lovely young woman standing at the back of the room with her back to the wall, with a big smile on her face, and she is your new finance director. Her name is Martina Chandler. She's wearing a white coat and a, she's wearing glasses. Martina, can you wave at us, make sure everybody knows?
Welcome aboard. We know you've been here for a few weeks, but welcome.
And we're very excited about her, and we're very excited about the future of Notaway. Blackstone's doing great. I hope we can help Crew with the water issues and all those kinds of things. It's equally important to Crew to thrive.
We need to fight on that.
Absolutely.
Did we get any feedback from trying to meet with the governor?
Nothing, not a phone call, no interest, no, no, nothing. Now, I will say, during the course of the Governor's Rural Prosperity Conference that was ongoing over at Barfoot, and the Tobacco Region Commission meetings that were also in Blackstone the week before last, we had opportunity to talk to, you know, the Secretary of Natural Resources, many other things. We're on the map. They know who we are because we have frayed their nerves, I'm sure, about these issues, whether or not the resolution will be in favor of Notaway County, and not just Crew, but Notaway County. I don't know, but we certainly frayed everybody's nerves as much as we could for two days. And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, board member comments. Ms. Simmons, do you have anything now?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Shuckerton?
No.
Mr. Ingram?
No.
All right. Gentlemen, the only thing I have is, ladies and gentlemen, is, the reason why I said gentlemen is because I'm speaking to you two. Mr. Ingram and Mr. Norbeck, there is a meeting that I am trying to set up with Burkeville Town Council, and it's under land acquisitions, so it'll be discussed in closed session. And Mr. Ingram and I had some conversations about this, and so we just got to get a date together. But I didn't want anybody to misconstrue what we're doing, but this, because it's land acquisitions, it's going to be discussed in closed session with Burkeville Town Council as soon as they can get something together. So, other than that, I want to thank everybody for everything you've done. Ms. Simmons, I hope you enjoyed your vacation there. It probably wasn't long enough.
Ms. Shuckerton?
What did I, what did I say? What did I say?
You said Ms. Simmons.
Oh, my God.
Helen, you missed your vacation.
I did.
So, it's, yeah. And Mr. Vaughn, it's only 9:30, sir. Did I do okay tonight?
You did well.
Are you going to take me trick-or-treating now?
You did well. It was far better than the 12 o'clock.
Well, but board members, if we don't have anything else, I take a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
We can't adjourn.
Oh, excuse me. We are going to continue this meeting. Until Wednesday, November the 8th at 6:00 p.m., right here. Okay. All right, everybody can stand up.